Commissioner Carpenter.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner calling.
Second.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call on this or a voice vote? Okay, roll call please.
Chair Bosscher.
Aye.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Aye.
Commissioner calling.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Aye.
Commissioner Zhang.
Yes.
Vote is complete.
Thank you. The meeting minutes are approved for September 14th. Next item on the agenda is consideration of new business. The presentation on the Harris Park Community Vision Plan, presented by Nathan Lawrence, Senior Planner.
Thank you.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Ready to go. All right. Good evening to the members of the Planning Commission. The audience is here with us tonight. I'm Nathan Lawrence, Senior Planner with Community Development. And I will be presenting you all with an overview of the Harris Park Community Vision Plan, plan process that was begun back in early 2019. And with me tonight to answer questions following my presentation is Rita McConnell, Planning Manager, Andrew Spurgeon, Principal Planner, Tom McConnell, Principal Planner, Heath Klein, Transportation Engineer, Michael Wright, Principal Engineer, Stephanie Troller, our Business Development Manager, and Nicole Ankeny, Senior landscape architect. Next slide, please. Creating and implementing a vision plan for Harris Park is identified as Objective 2D in the city's recently updated strategic plan. The planning process has been managed by a cross-departmental team with the assistance of Winter and Company, who provided design services and helped facilitate our public engagement events. Over the course of plan development, a large number of internal meetings have been held with key staff members from across Community Development, Parks Recreation and Libraries, and Economic Development. And all of these parties have contributed to the development of the final plan draft. The city has been closely involved with the Harris Park neighborhood for decades and has made significant physical and programmatic investments in the area, including streetscape enhancements, park improvements, and infrastructure improvements, and grants to improve businesses in the commercial core. Division planning efforts are the next chapter in the city's partnership with the Harris Park community and aim to establish a solid foundation for future improvements to this unique and cherished neighborhood. During our extensive outreach efforts, community members were asked to describe the Harris Park neighborhood in 15 years. At the top right of this slide in front of you, a word cloud illustrates the importance of various community aspects based on those responses with a strong emphasis on maintaining a sense of identity. Next slide, please. On the left here, you'll see the core study area, which forms the primary focus of our planning work and centers around the historic core of the neighborhood along 73rd Avenue. The boundary then extends north to south from 72nd to 74th along Bradburn Boulevard and was also extended up to 75th along Lowell based on community feedback acknowledging that this mixed-use corridor acts as an extension of the core. The community also requested that at the core area boundary be expanded to include areas south of 72nd Avenue and west of Hidden Lake High School along Irving Street. These were areas that the focus group members saw as critical gateways to their neighborhood. On the right side of the slide is the Greater Harris Park Neighborhood Study Area. Through the public participation process, a great deal of input was made that applied more generally to the Greater Harris Park neighborhood rather than just the core area. And thus, a larger study area was created to capture and record all of that feedback for use in other planning initiatives such as the comprehensive plan update. Next slide, please. What is a vision plan? It is a plan that delivers a vision for the community's future, one that is rooted in public input. A key component of this plan is the community's vision statement, which I have included here in yellow. This vision was forged from consensus on physical improvements and the desired nature of future development. By engaging in open dialogue about the role that the city should play in the neighborhood, the vision planning process has built trust between neighborhood residents, business owners, and the city, and will help ensure that future city investments align with the planned vision. The Harris Park Community Plan is, in its essence, a comprehensive, community-supported, city-vetted approach to the revitalization of Harris Park and the preservation of its unique character. Next slide, please. Harris Park is an established community with a long history and a unique character. Most of Westminster's land area consists of master plan communities formed through the plan development or PUD process. Historic Westminster and Harris Park in particular was developed much more organically, resulting in a mix of uses, scales, civic spaces, and architectural styles. So our charge with this planning effort was to work hand-in-hand with our local residents and business owners to identify the unique characteristics that are to be preserved and what should be allowed to change incrementally over time. From the city's perspective, the vision plan allows for capital projects and programs to be initiated that we know are supported by the community and thus allow us to allocate budgets and resources in a manner that yields the most positive impact. Given the wide range of building and architectural styles in the neighborhood, the creation of a documented shared vision also provides some certainty for investors so they can propose new infill development, knowing that their proposals are supported by a community vision. On the right side of this slide is a map detail from the draft plan showing a vision for one of the nine character areas, just giving a taste of what the community wants to see when future infill development occurs. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the vision planning process was primarily focused on public outreach, which was comprised of two primary components. The first was a set of three intimate focus group meetings. The focus group consisted of local property owners, business owners, residents, and nonprofit leaders who were asked to provide guidance to the project team at critical junctures in the planning process. Here is a list in yellow of those folks. So as you can see, there's a wide balance representation from the neighborhood. These stakeholders are highly invested in the success of Harris Park, and they provided our project team with invaluable input that helped ensure a successful outcome. In these meetings, focus group members set the boundaries of the study area, which was pivotal and an iterative conversation. The group also identified opportunities for redevelopment, including specific sites inside the core of the neighborhood. They also helped identify specific character areas that should be separated from others, which was key in helping us develop the final set of nine sub-areas that were reviewed by the community at the larger community workshops. The focus group also guided the programming content of these workshops and refined the input that we received. In the final focus group meeting, after a hiatus caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, the group met with staff to confirm that the vision we had established for each character area was still accurate and provided some initial input on the first draft of the plan. Next slide, please. A series of three community workshops formed the core of the public outreach process. These were attended by local residents and business owners, including members of the Spanish-speaking community who utilized translation services provided by the city. These workshops were also attended by city management, city councils, and the mayor. The workshops were led by the Winter and Company consulting team, who specialized in public outreach and neighborhood input. City staff from across departments facilitated each of these meetings, engaging in an intimate and meaningful way with the community during the various activities. High public attendance at all three meetings, with over 80 at the first one held at the Grange Hall, speaks to the level of interest the community has in enhancing their neighborhood and moving forward in partnership with the city. This high turnout also speaks to the level of involvement of the focus group members. It can be credited with really getting the word out and helping boost attendance beyond anything that we expected. Next slide, please. In the community workshops, community members were engaged in a wide range of tasks. In the first one, there have just been selected images of development types to demonstrate appropriate land uses and densities in different areas of the Harris Park core, giving the project team clear direction on the desired future development patterns. In the second workshop, community members prioritized programming opportunities in three existing public spaces, highlighting their potential for new uses and programming. In the third and final workshop, meeting participants reviewed exhibits summarizing the first plan draft, confirming the direction of the plan and ensuring the project team that we had summarized their input accurately. The participants also commented on a set of implementation goals, objectives, and actions that will be used to ensure that future projects and policies move the neighborhood forward toward realizing their vision. Next slide, please. The final outreach component consisted of an online survey which spanned the month of April of this year. Total of 56 community members completed the survey, which was focused primarily on gathering general feedback on the direction and vision of each individual component of the plan. In summary, 79% of the participants or 45 of the 56 respondents agreed with the overall vision of the plan. And many of the folks who took the survey also made suggestions for edits, wording, and graphics in the plan. Next slide, please. The plan is organized around a few key components. First and foremost, the plan provides very detailed guidance for preserving the unique character of each of the nine sub-areas of the Harris Park core. And this includes a vision for future land uses, broad parameters on a scale of redevelopment, and preferred building materials associated with new construction. The plan also identifies opportunities for connectivity and mobility enhancements, including areas in need of streetscape improvements, pedestrian and vehicular safety enhancements, and the addition of bike facilities. Identification of issues such as different housing product types and needs confronting the Greater Harris Park neighborhood are also captured in the plan, memorializing input gained throughout the public participation process. These issues were used to directly inform the comprehensive plan update. The plan also lays out a set of principles that will be used to inform the design of future development, future development projects, and lays the groundwork for a more detailed set of design standards to be created in the future with additional participation from the neighborhood. And finally, an implementation program is aimed at achieving the community vision expressed through goals, objectives, and action steps. This implementation plan has been thoroughly vetted by city staff to ensure the delivery of an actionable set of projects and programs. Next slide, please. A vision plan only lays the foundation for the future. Now we have to implement that vision in partnership with the community. But with consensus in hand, we can move forward faster and with the confidence that our actions fit with what the neighborhood desires. And we have already begun implementation in anticipation of the final plan being approved, knowing that this community wants action, not just more plans. We have completed work on a detailed project prioritization matrix. And we worked with staff across multiple city departments. It identifies partners and funding sources and project timelines for each individual task that will be undertaken to achieve the goals that were outlined by the community. Budget requests for 2022 have been vetted based on the actions that are recommended in the plan. And staff has already initiated a series of projects that can be delivered quickly with existing identified resources. Some examples: Safety enhancements have already been scheduled for construction at the intersection of West 72nd Avenue and Bradburn Boulevard, West 72nd Avenue and Irving Street, and West 73rd and Lowell. During the vision planning process, these were crossings that were identified by the community as being quite hazardous. In addition, a major grant was recently awarded to our city that will be used to fund the transportation study of the West 72nd Avenue corridor, which runs straight through the study area. Improvements to safety and walkability of this corridor were identified perhaps as the most critical implementation item during our community outreach activities. But that was some great news we got recently. Staff has also completed, just last year, a parking study of the core area, which provides direction of how to cope with future parking pressures. These parking concerns were documented in the plan as a primary concern raised by the community. Due to the community input received during the plan revisioning process and the city's need to improve access and parking for the Westminster Community Garden, staff recommended the cancellation of the planned CDTV affordable housing project at 7225 Bradburn Boulevard. City Council has since approved the dedication of this property as a public park that will be integrated with the England Park corridor. Through the course of the outreach process, we also received a great deal of positive feedback on the addition of new art pieces in the core area. The strengthening of our art network will continue into the future and will utilize the planned vision as a guide, maximize the impact of these improvements. The design principles featured in the plan have already been referenced in review of recent projects in the Harris Park core and will continue to do so in the future, ensuring that new projects are designed in a way that is compassionate to the local context. A future rezoning of the mixed-use core is currently being discussed with the intent to fulfill the community's desire to reduce barriers to appropriate and context-sensitive infill development. It should be noted that in its final form, the plan is not regulatory in nature and is not intended to be binding what would be available for consultation by residents, investors, and city staff to better understand the community's vision for their future. The vision plan has also provided input into the ongoing Westminster Forward planning efforts, including the comprehensive plan update, the 2021 Transportation and Mobility Plan, the Parks Recreation and Libraries Plan, put forward, and the development of other city policies. With this public input in hand, city staff has the confidence to move forward with funding requests and additional design efforts to ensure that improvements in the area and more that will come in the future are ultimately realized. Staff will be taking these projects forward, knowing that they address civic needs identified by the community, allowing residents and business owners to see the results of their input into our visioning process. Next slide, please. And finally, here's a bird's eye view illustrating just one possible future of the Harris Park core, showing a variety of public and private investments that are, again, based on the community's vision. It only paints an abstract picture, but it's a powerful tool to have to describe in a visual means how the community sees their neighborhood changing over time. After tonight's meeting and discussion, the draft of the vision plan will be presented to city council for their review and consideration to receive the plan. With that, that concludes my update or my presentation on the Harris Park plan. Again, we have a number of folks here tonight. Stephanie Troller with Economic Development, Andrew Spurgeon and Rita McConnell and Tom McConnell with Planning, as well as Heath Klein, our Transportation Engineer, and Nicole Ankeny, our Senior landscape architect, are all here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I will open it up for questions from the commission, but before I do, Nathan, I'm sure you touched on this, but please remind me, does this plan affect both the core and the Harris Park neighborhood? And what is the difference between the two?
Yeah, so when we started off our process, initially, we weren't just focused on that smaller core area, but we were getting a lot of input that really didn't apply just to there, but really applied to other issues such as housing needs and whatnot that applied to this sort of larger area. So the document is organized in a way that most of, probably three-quarters of the content, just applies into that core area. There is a chapter that is dedicated to sort of greater issues, and that has been referenced, most recently, in our comp plan work. So it's sort of a section of it, and really, it was, again, just a result of that, of the community saying that we have issues that really don't fit into the small area, but we felt were important to capture, especially with the Westminster Forward effort going on. It was a great opportunity to gain input that we could then feed into other processes that are going on, such as the Transportation and Mobility Plan as well.
Okay, and so it looks like the Greater Harris Park neighborhood, the one that's outlined in red, has more of a commercial feel, and that's why it is kind of considered different than the yellow outlined core?
So that's a great question. So it really is a mixed-use core. There's apartment projects as well as commercial projects, mostly apartments and mixed... So it's really a mixed-use center. To the north is a sort of greater areas primarily single-family. In nature, there are some multifamily, but that mixed-use core was sort of seen as the heat to revitalizing the larger area. And so the issues facing that area were somewhat different than the ones facing the larger, more residential or strictly residential area.
Right, great, thank you. At this time, I would ask if any commissioners have any questions or comments? It looks like no questions. I would like to ask anyone in the audience who would like to speak to please make your comments now. Please keep them to five minutes.
Chair Bosscher, we do have one request. Gary Shea was the only resident to sign up to speak. Mr. Shea, would you like to approach the podium?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gary Shea. I've been a resident of the Harris Park area for over 60 years. What I've just handed out here is a list of the South Westminster surveys, plans, and studies, going all the way back to 1987. And I've been involved in a lot of these here. 1987, a blight survey for South Westminster. 1992, another blight survey for South Westminster. 1992, a South Westminster urban renewal plan. 1996, revised South Westminster urban renewal plan. 2006, revised South Westminster urban renewal plan. That was 73 pages. 2001, South Westminster strategic revitalization plan. 2002, North Gate redevelopment area blight study. 2007, design framework plan for the Harris Park neighborhood. That was done by Winters &amp; Company. 2013, South Westminster neighborhood revitalization strategy area plan. 2016, historic Westminster Art District marketing plan. 2020 was the beginning of this Harris Park area plan. It originally started as the Harris Park area plan, and then the name was changed to the Harris Park Community Vision Plan. 2020, they did a parking study and finished up the final report in November. And then now we're up to this Harris Park Community Vision Plan. I attended each and every one of the meetings that they had, focus group and the workshops. And I was concerned from the very start. Roughly 100 people down in the Grange, 80% of those people I did not recognize from the neighborhood, as far as business owners or residents. Yet, they were participating and were working on the vision. We've come down in that neighborhood now to kind of cringe when we hear the word "vision." What it means to us is that you don't like the way our neighborhood looks, and you want it to look different. You want to change it. Somebody wants to change it, but not us. And what reinforced that, I think, was at the Grange, too. I saw what was going on, and people that I did not know were cutting and pasting and putting buildings on people, residents and business owners that I knew had been in those properties for a number of years. That was concerning, upsetting to me. As I walked by one of the tables, I heard a young lady say, "We should just scrape it and start over," meaning the Harris Park neighborhood. Shortly after that, the Winters &amp; Company approached the city, and they needed some additional funding. I did write a letter to the city council. I'm just going to read a little excerpt of that here. This was the first week of August 2020. "Last Monday evening, July 20, 2020, an update was given to you in regards to Harris Park Vision, Community Vision Plan, and a request for 334,000 additional in funding. As I listened to the presentation, I was disappointed that accurate information was not being shared with you. What is more concerning were the references to that part of town, and tens of millions of dollars have already been invested down there, and the word 'I saw.' For years, we have heard that and felt that there is a shared opinion and a bias for our part of the town amongst city employees towards the residents and business owners that have spoken up to advocate for our community. The comments in this presentation reinforce and confirm that perception. The most insulting comment came from a city employee callously characterizing South Westminster when they stated, and I quote, "The community has not been engaged in a wider conversation on what they want to be when they grow up." And that's recorded in the study session that was given to city council. That statement is insulting and makes insensitive and inaccurate assumptions of our community. In these plans, I've got almost every single one that is on that list there. There's a few that I'm still looking for so that I can go through and see what was done, what wasn't done, and where we're at with any of those. That was a disappointing thing, too. When I presented those at the very first focus group, one of the facilitators looked through and said, "Oh, well, there's no action plan, and there's no implementation." Also made the comment that council didn't adopt these. Now, realize I've been in an awkward situation this evening. There is no question-and-answer period here, too. You are only receiving this report. The page has already been made to them. The report is done and final. It's a done deal. The same thing with city council. There might be minor changes made to that. And I realize, too, that it's just kind of a guide, that nothing is cast in stone. One of the interesting things is years ago, probably about eight years ago, we were concerned about trying to revitalize 73rd Avenue. The council at that time listened, and they actually put it on the strategic plan that they wanted a unique... They wanted three unique restaurants in Westminster and one of them in particular on 73rd Avenue. That stayed on the strategic plan for at least three years. We never got a restaurant, and that's no longer on the strategic plan. Those are the things that we see happening over and over and over again. They recently did a parking study.
Sir?
Yes?
Please go ahead and make this your very last comment.
Okay. There's a definition of a word out there, and they say... The definition of that word is "doing the same thing over and over and over again and expecting a different results." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who signed up to speak, Jennifer?
We do not.
Is there anyone else in attendance who would like to speak? Commissioner calling.
If I could ask a question. Mr. Shea, thank you for your presentation. I do have a question. Can I ask a question to staff? Or am I only allowed to make a comment? I can ask a question, just checking. Well, I think Mr. Shea brought up a good point, and I'm hoping that Nathan, you can help answer that. And how do, during all these focus groups, these meetings where you are collecting information, is, how were you making sure that the people that were in those meetings represented that area that was being planned, rather than, I mean, maybe it didn't matter to you that that was the greater part of Westminster, but it seems like the people that live in the area should be able to influence those decisions on the vision that created. Was there a process in place to make sure the people that, or at least defining the comments from the people that lived in the neighborhood versus the people outside the neighborhood, is that identified?
Yes, so, we did a lot of outreach for this, and we really targeted, we actually did postcard mailings, which I helped make the postcards, and we mailed those out to everybody in the actual core area. So we were trying to make an extra effort to see that they show up, so that's one effort. We also publicized it more widely. Again, we don't really have means or, I think, an overall desire to be exclusive in our meetings. In the final survey, it was asked, you know, if you worked in the area, if you were a visitor to the area, and I don't think that we should discount the opinions of people who go to businesses in an area, shop there, or work there. Just because you live there, don't own a business, I don't think means that you necessarily have less of a say. But we did ask that question and have those results that are in the appendix, that was included in your packet of what percentage of the fifty-six respondents took that. I'd have to look it up to see what the actual rate was, but we didn't have a bouncer or anything like that, taking anyone out. But we, again, this wasn't just one meeting where we got all of the input and then sort of went, went off and, you know, threw up our plan. We had seven meetings. At each step, we went back to the focus group, which had a lot of members from this community, and checked with them on it, and said, "Does this make sense?" We checked it again, we brought it back to the community in the third workshop, and said, here, we had big boards up and showed everything that was sort of light up. We had a few tweaks, oh, there should be a street here, this doesn't, I own this house here, not gonna work if you build a block here. So we got that, we got that input. And then again, with the survey, we actually sent out the entire, well, I'm sorry, in the last focus group, we had them review the entire draft plan and got comments as well. And then in the online survey, we also had an option for input on the entire draft, and we didn't receive anything that said, you know, "This map, this doesn't make any sense." It was all just small, small tweaks and refinements. So I think, I honestly think we've done an incredibly thorough job of vetting this over and over and over again. And so I think there was a good balance input, and a lot of folks that showed up all three meetings throughout the entire process, and we can verify that with our sign-in sheets. But we didn't ask them if they had an address, or verified it, or kicked them out if they didn't.
Thank you for that explanation, I apologize, I did not look in the appendix.
It's, it's pretty click sense.
It's nighttime reading, I'll be sure to do that. The question is, you know, it's a fair question, that, you know, who is influencing the plan? It sounds like you had quite a bit of people on the, on the focus group that were from the area, focus group list, those people are.
All of them.
So there's no really way to say what percentage of your feedback came from inside the, inside the area, the vision area, as opposed to council, there's no way that either.
Besides our survey, definitely sort of tease it apart there based on if they answered, honestly. And yeah, again, all of the focus group was representatives inside of the neighborhood, but at the community workshops, no, there was no way other than our sign-in sheets, and emails, we didn't ask for addresses and didn't relocate anybody.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Any other commissioners wish to comment?
Mr. Shea's comments, along with two of the emails that we received, seemed to point to the basic question of respect and validation that we're not going to change the character of the neighborhood in doing all, but at the same time wanting some level of growth and change, because as indicated here, thirty years of blight studies sort of wears on the park, I would think. The zoning piece of this, the planning piece of this, might probably well take care of by your document. Is there companion work being done by the economic development and other departments to ensure that it gets safe, this piece of paper, which I think is Mr. Shea's primary point, I would say. So that, I guess I throw that out, is that going on, as part of the planning?
Yes, absolutely, and it's a great, it's a great point. There's been a lot of work done on here, I mean, this is an extensive list, I can't speak to a lot of these projects, they're way before my time, but we definitely understand that we don't want more plans, that's why I sort of went through the implementation work that's already started, you know, we can start to build on that momentum. There's definitely economic development work going on. Stephanie Troller is on the line, I suppose, and she can sort of speak to that.
Hi, everybody, can you guys hear me, Commissioners? Thank you. Stephanie Troller, Business Development Manager. I've been working with Nathan and the rest of the team along with this vision plan, and I really want to emphasize a couple points. As Mr. Shea pointed out, there's been over thirty-five years of plans that have stopped and started, and I think it has created a certain amount of confusion in the community and, and a set of expectations that we obviously haven't met all of those planning requirements. I believe some of those plans that Mr. Shea referenced were actually UC Denver studio, student projects as well that were never, like we said, adopted by the, by our City Council. And I think what, the, the big takeaway for me in this process is we wanted to meet the community where they are right now and to help clarify what they actually want to see in their community. So once the, this, this plan is adopted by you, the Planning Commissioner, and then later on in the month to, to our City Council, we will continue to work, we, we support, I work with many businesses in the area, providing grants and training opportunities to make sure that they have what they need to be successful in the area, and we are recruiting and we are making efforts to encourage more investment, private sector investment into the area. There is not a plan yet, again, we're really waiting for this particular plan draft to be adopted by both you and as the Planning Commission and in City Council. And then once we, we have that confirmation, we'll be able to, to continue to build upon the work that's already being done, and I'm open to questions if you have any.
Mister calling.
Thank you very much. Stephanie, that's on the line?
Yes, no.
I just want to clarify, we're not adopting this plan, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I, my apologies, receiving the plan.
Okay, we're just receiving, I think the same with the City Council. Let me just make sure I understood, I wasn't missing something on that.
No, I misspoke, my apologies.
Now, and I understand that sometimes some of these are done by students and whatnot, but it is quite a list that Mr. Shea has presented here. But my understanding of the plan is it's meant to provide a framework or to provide a vision of what the community wants to happen in the future. And if that's the case, to me, that seems reasonable, and I think the plan that's been presented, the vision, it's very well thought out, it's a really good point, and it's not something that's gonna control what happens, it just is an idea of what could happen if that moves in that direction. So I think, I think the plan, it wasn't so much a question for you, Stephanie, it was just another comment I'm talking to.
Commissioner McConnell, and Commissioner Carpenter, you're next.
Thank you, Commissioner Bosscher. So Nate, I, I think I need some clarification on, on the attendees of the focus groups and the workshops. So members of the focus group were at the workshop, but not necessarily everyone at the workshop was in the focus group, correct?
It's a good question, so I can explain that clearly. So the focus group was on that list, but those folks were at, or they were invited to every focus group, there were no others that came. A few had substitutes, like Dino had, in his stead, but other than that, it was just those members on the focus group, were supposed to be there at every meeting, sort of have that continuity going, going forth through the process. The community workshops were a wider invite list, everybody that was in, that went to the first one was invited to the second and so on, as well as we did postcard mailings for each one to everybody that lived in the core area. And, yeah, so they were, there were focus members, obviously, who did attend the community workshops. But again, the focus group was just that, that, that set list, and most members attended every meeting with a few.
And then we're, we're certain that everyone who attended a focus group was a resident of Harris Park?
A resident, a business owner, or worked in a nonprofit there.
Okay, and if I understand that the process of the document correctly, it was the, the focus groups that approved the content of the plan that we're looking at tonight?
Yes, they reviewed it, and our third focus group, the community also reviewed portions of it at a high level throughout the entire process, but the focus group, yes, that was the sort of intent of our third meeting, after COVID, sort of shut down, lost about a year, then came back, and they looked at the entire plan and provided comments.
As, maybe you can tell from my line of questioning, I just want to make sure that, that what has gone into the document is in fact the, the voice of the people who were on the focus groups and speaking for Harris Park in general.
Yes, they, they reviewed all of the content at multiple junctures.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nathan, I don't know that you answered that question quite entirely. The, you said that they reviewed after the third meeting some of the content at a high level, but you never answered the question if, if the book, if the neighborhood focus group actually took any sort of vote to approve the plan or anything like that. You just, you just said, well, they, they reviewed it and they gave some comments.
Yeah, I can answer that. I said that the, that the community workshops were reviewed, reviewed the plan content at a high level, the community workshops. The focus group was given the entire plan and the draft, there's just prior to this one that incorporated their comments. So they, they reviewed it separately in the third workshop on their own and provided their comments. There was no vote to approve, wouldn't really be appropriate for a community sort of do that. And so we, but we did have the online survey, which, which has those sort of stats on people who agreed, took the, who took the survey, agreed with the, with the proposals in the project.
Well, I want to know, did, was, did a majority of the focus group, were they in favor of the plan or that they just provide comments? Because I, it would, it seems like if we're presenting this as a document as the voice of a neighborhood, then it seems like we should, we should have that type of, what, I don't, I don't see how that's inappropriate at all, at least of the, at least of that sub, the sub-focus group, those fourteen, fifteen names.
They all participated in the third workshop, where we went over the plan content, we gave the plan to them a few weeks prior to look at and provide comment, and no comments were provided that in the direction of, "We don't support this document." That's all that I can say, there was no vote.
All right, well, I got that. And, you know, at, at first, when I heard that this was a vision document coming up, I wasn't that, you know, okay, it's a vision document, that's, that's great, it has no regulatory teeth, the wire we hear, and then, and like, well, it's the voice of the neighborhood, and we, and I remember I was at the Grange as well with, you know, with, was one of the eighty percent of people who don't live in historic, in the original Westminster area, Harris Park, or anywhere near, I live in countryside. But I wanted to go down there and support the efforts, and, but I do remember it was just construction paper planning on, on giant aerial photos, it was not a true dialogue of what the community wants. So, you know, and, and hearing Mr. Shea come up, who, who, you know, if, if I were to pick, he would be on the top two or three as the voice of, of historic Westminster, don't get me wrong, and he, and he has negative comments to say about it, I'm just wondering if this process actually, actually is accomplishing anything. So I know that, you know, you have this entire list, which is, that's impressive, and I know that some of them were never adopted by City Council, well, this won't be adopted by Council either, it'll just be received, and it'll either be used or it'll just be another thing for the next expensive consultant to ignore. Anyhow, those are my comments right now.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Got two things, first one's a question, Nathan, the, the group of folks who are at the focus, how were they chosen, or how did they?
Thank you, I'll, I'll let Stephanie Troller sort of, she really has her finger on the pulse in that area, and she helped select those folks. Stephanie, if you could answer that?
Sure, hello, everybody, it's Stephanie Troller again, Business Development Manager. Just to be clear, we wanted, when we were first conceiving this plan, we did want to recalibrate some of the expectations and make sure we had consensus. I don't think our goal was ever to get one hundred percent consensus on anything that we're doing, I think we all realized that that is an impossible mission, but we certainly wanted consensus on, on, on our approach and our recommendations. And so I have been working pretty closely with the area for some time. We did, I worked with the historic marketing plan, I've done the parking plan, and I wanted a group that was well-rounded, that represented the entirety voice of, of historic Westminster, the old and the new, business, business owners, residents, developers, property owners, et cetera. So I took, we made the recommendation based upon that, the people who have been the most active and the most passionate about their community, of which Gary Shea was on this Planning Commission. And I will say, too, that everybody, while it wasn't appropriate for them to actually vote on the, the draft, because that is, or to provide any formal direction, because that is the most appropriate for you as the Planning Commission and our City Council next, however, they were given ample opportunity to provide their input, and there was definitely check-ins along the way on where we were each step of the way. So while Mr. Shea may not agree with all that has been presented tonight, I can, I will say that I will stand behind how the composition, we also had check-ins on who else should be a, a part of, who else should be part of the focus group, and what else should we know? So I feel confident in the process in which we went through. Did we get a hundred percent consensus? Clearly not, but I do feel that we have majority of consensus, and I think that is a realistic approach to where we are today.
All right, I don't, there's, when they, sort of getting off that topic and moving on to something else, the plan uses the term adaptive reuse quite a bit, it doesn't really get down to brass tacks and say, what does that really look like for this particular city? Cities all over the north area have done that, some very good use, like Old Town Atlanta, others like worship of Federal Heights, I think to Mr. Shea's point, and one of our email writers, think it would be beneficial if the city could be more definitive in structures and worship, or that portion, that really need to be saved, sort of, and, there, Seventy-second Moles, that's really nice architectural buildings that have been there for a while, some may call them blighted, architecture of, I don't mean that the store's full, I mean the electronic shop that's mentioned, some of the other structures along Seventy-second Shore. I just encourage that the planning department, economic development, keeps it, keeps it in place, that's this, or, or. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I would like to thank you, Nathan, for your presentation, very well done, and it is very thorough, if nothing else, even though there is not complete agreement, we've got a very. We've got a very thorough document here, and it touches on many of the problems and ideas that need to be addressed. Do we have any old business that we need to discuss? Any miscellaneous business? Jennifer, when do we meet again?
Fourth Tuesday of October. Is that the 25th? 26th?
Okay. Thank you. Unless there's any more business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.